At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Like to welcome everyone here this evening, since the majority of the council is participating in this meeting via distance, I will ask Jasmine DeSmet to take the role. Present.
Present. Steve Meister is present. I can't hear you, Jasmine.
Steve Meister, Glenn Bearcooler.
Here.
Don De Kramer.
Here.
Russ Lebat.
Here.
Jim Lozinski.
Present.
And the entire council is present. So of course, we do have a quorum. We'll move forward with our agenda. We have a agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The agenda I have number two would be to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on September 22, 2020. The council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Russ to approve the minutes of the meeting as they have been presented. We will move to a vote. Jasmine, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Eve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Lebat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda I have number three. This is the first of two public hearings that we have this evening. The first public hearing, agenda number three, is a public hearing on the car estate's fifth addition. We will conduct the public hearing and following the conclusion of the public hearing, then we will consider the approval of the preliminary plat as well as the resolution that would approve the final plat. So with that, Jason Anderson, I believe you're on the line.
Yes, Mayor.
I will call on Jason Anderson, the city engineer director of public works to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Attached, you should see a copy of the preliminary plat for car states fifth edition and later in the packet, the final plat. Developer approached the city with a request to plat on one additional lot until the end of the existing development of car states. The one lot is on the end of an existing paved street with city utilities present. Staff's only concern with the plating is the street drainage of the short segment of Continental Street that drains plan east there and it doesn't get off the road. The developer is aware of that and at the planning commission meeting, property owners of 510 Continental did show up to express that same concern. So the developer has indicated that the drainage will be rectified at a later date next spring. So we intend to take him at his word with that. Staff has no further concerns with this plat.
Okay, thank you. Well, note for the record, the developer is is present at the Merritt Center location. We'll open up for input as part of this public hearing. Anyone wish to speak as part of the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, Jasmine, would you take the vote on the motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
Don De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Lebat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll now consider the approval of the preliminary plat. Are there, Jason, any comments you want to make about the preliminary plat?
No, no further comments.
I move approval of the preliminary plat.
I'll second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John to approve the preliminary plat. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Jasmine?
Mayor Burns.
Abstain.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Eve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Lebat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. And then the third and final action here would be the resolution that would approve the final plat. Are there questions?
I move we adopt the resolution which approves the final plat.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Jasmine, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Abstain.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
Don De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Lebat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda number four. This is also a public hearing on the ice and snow removal and weed elimination from private property in the city of Marshall. We'll once again have a public hearing. Following the conclusion of the public hearing, we'll consider the resolution that would adopt the assessment. I will call on city clerk Kyle Box to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is the annual item that the council addresses with elimination or assessed amounts for ice, snow, and weed removal. This is within the resolution, there is a list of properties that have not paid those fees to date. Between now and the November 13, 2020, as listed in the resolution, property owners do have the opportunity to pay off their assessed assessed amounts with no interest added. And as was mentioned earlier today, property owners have already come in to start paying those off. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Open up for input as part of the public hearing. Any questions for Kyle?
I can motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Jasmine?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
Don De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Lebat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski. Jim Lozinski.
Okay, so the the motion does pass with with six affirmatives. We'll now consider the resolution that would adopt the assessment. Are there questions about that resolution?
I move the resolution adopting the assessment.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Jasmine?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
Don De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Lebat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
There are six affirmative votes. The motion does pass. We'll move then to the award of bids. The award of bids would be considered the award of bids for the winter road salt and winter sand. I'll call on Jason Anderson, director of public works and the engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. Bids were received on September 22 for our winter road salt and sand. You've got the bid tabulation included in your packet. We did receive three bids each for sand and salt. The low proposal for salt was from Black Strap, Black Strap Inc. of Nebraska in the amount of $75.48 per ton and a total cost of $37,740. And the sand came from Top Graveling LLC of Minnota for $12,999 per ton and a total of $12,990. Our budget does include $45,000 for salt and $15,000 for sand. It would be our recommendation to award these quotes.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason?
Jason, these places do include delivery. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
And Jason, the there's adequate storage under the hoop structure?
Yep. Yes, we have adequate storage.
Any other question for Jason?
You want this as one recommendation or is two the question?
Actually, it's listed as two. It's listed as two.
Okay. I'll move the recommendation, approve the recommendation for forwarding the salt bid to Black Strap Inc.
I'll second that.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Jasmine?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
Don De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Lebat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. And the second recommendation was the award of the sand bid to Top Graveling LLC of Minnota. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Jasmine?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Eve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
Don De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Lebat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
The motion does pass. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are in the consent agenda this evening. And they include the National Highway Traffic Safety Grant, Law Enforcement Center repairs, the authorization to declare vehicles as surplus property for the Marshall Police Department, the approval of a farm lease between Paul and Fran Dykes Inc. and the city of Marshall. Consider the approval of an agreement with Sun Life Financial for basic life, AD&amp;D, child life, and supplemental life insurance. Consider the wastewater treatment facility improvement project and application for payment to Magni Construction and payment of invoice to American Engineering Testing and a payment of invoice to Bolton and Me. Consider the vacation of a utility easement in the car subdivision one, block one, lots nine and 10, and receive the petition for the vacation of utilities and call for the public hearing. Approve the final pay application for Lincoll for the former hotel demolition contract. Consider the application for exempt permit for Southwest Minnesota Ducks Unlimited and consider the premises permit application for American Legion 113. And then finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Number 13, please.
Any other item? If not, is there a motion to for the remaining items on the consent agenda?
So move.
I would still move.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Jasmine?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Eve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
Don De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Lebat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
The motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda number 13. This is approved the final pay application for Lincoll for the hotel demolition. Jim?
I just wanted to touch base on this. There's a lot of work that staff has put into making sure the city was treated fairly on the moving parts of tearing down this hotel. And I want to just commend him for that publicly, that, you know, Ray and Sharon and and Jason have put a lot of time into this. So it's it's for the benefit of the taxpayers of Marshall. And I do want to note that it does show a $47,000 deductible. Some of that will be added back in a different bill from DNG because they're going to finish some of the filling out the hole and and pack into the gravel simply because it made sense for them to take over that part of the contract, the Lincoll to finish out their contract and move on to other projects and be done in Marshall. So but I just want to bring note of that stuff. Or if there's any questions folks had on this this change order, again, it is a deduct. It will end up being somewhat of a deduct at the end. So and again, I want to commend the staff and the committee who also we worked to get this down for the taxpayers. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jim, for that for that input. Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
I'll second it.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Jasmine?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Eve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
Don De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Lebat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And motion does pass. So we'll move then to agenda number 17. And then I have number 17 is to consider the approval of the amended Schwann Regional Amateur Sports Center, City Marshal Convention Visitors Bureau 2020 service contract. Sharon, do you want to start with this?
Sure. We have been monitoring the sales tax revenue for food, beverage, and lodging. The food and beverage tax does provide for operational support of merit and of Red Baron. And as we are all aware, we have an annual contract with Convention Visitors Bureau to provide promotion of the Southwest sports amateur complex. And we've been since the beginning of the pandemic in discussions with CVB and kind of being cautious about the agreement and can we continue the agreement as is considering there's some reductions. So we did have several meetings with them. I believe our CVB director is is on is present during this discussion. Item two on the meeting, we did issue them formal notice as per the agreement to amend the agreement. And we did amend the agreement to reduce the amount of the contract consistent with reduction in revenue. And I'm not sure where CVB is with this, with their particular CVB board, but the recommendation to the council is to accept the amended agreement with a reduction in the in the contract amount for October, November, and December. And I don't know, Cassie, if you wanted to add anything, I believe you were on this call as well.
Yeah, I am. Hi, everyone. Thanks, Sharon. Yeah, we just really wanted to look at our budget and find some ways that we could save some money elsewhere so that we could take this deduction and be able to help the city and keep this relationship with the amateur sports complex really strong. So everyone on our board is completely accepting of this amended contract.
Thank you, Cassie. Thank you, Sharon. Open up for questions.
The 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 contract indicates that it effective, the change is effective October 1, even though it's October 13 now, correct?
Correct.
Other questions?
I move approval.
Well, second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John to approve the amended contract. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Jasmine?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
Don De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Lebat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And motion does pass. Then I have number 18. Consider the purchase of tactical rescue equipment for the Marshall Fire Department. With us tonight is is Fire Chief Quentin Brunswick to present this request.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you can tell, excuse me, as you can see from the background information provided, we used to be provided services from the Yellow Medicine County Tactical Rescue Team within the last 18 months. It's been disbanded. They are no longer in service. There has been a new team formed in it's called Olivia Area Tactical Rescue Team. At a minimum, they would be more than 90 minutes away in the event of an incident like this. I saw a great need for something like this to be closer to home for us, especially with our industry here in the city. We were able to purchase some equipment last year through the operating budget. We've had some unforeseen purchases that were needed this year. We still may be able to put this into our operating budget, but for now, the plan is to push it through with the capital improvement plan that's approved with $20,000 this year. I'm here for any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Quentin.
I don't I don't have a question, but I have a comment. And and this kind of hits close to home for me. And it obviously, you know, I'm a big supporter of the fire department and the work that they do and how hard our firefighters train and actually provide the service. And recently, the Olivia Tactical Rescue Team had a call south of Hector. And I know a little bit of the details, not a lot, but it's spoken to a couple of the firefighters. And I also talked to the sheriff's office from Rendville County regarding that. And it was a youth that was working on an auger system, supporting a grain dryer and grain handling, and ended up caught with his legs caught in the auger a number of feet off the ground. And if you can imagine what that had to be like in that hot that tactical rescue team worked with the other first responders to free him, and he ended up making a choice to lose one foot, but could have easily lost his life had he not had expedited rescue. So I fully support this and appreciate the fire department taking on another responsibility with both training and service, you know, and they've already got a big plate full. But it 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 just speaks really highly of the of the folks that we have on the department here, and I fully support this.
Thank you. Thank you, Craig. Quentin, the point Craig brings up, probably you want to maybe spend just a few minutes talking about the type of calls where this this equipment would be necessary. I think the council understands that, but for just our general audience that might be viewing this, if you spend just a few minutes talking about that.
Sure, absolutely, Mayor. Thank you. Majority of this would be for areas that, for example, and I'll just use it as an example, of the city hall building. As we know, there's a lot of work being done at that that area. Let's say that the the folks that were laying the block for the elevator shaft, something happened to them. They fell down inside or even got trapped on top. Even just something like, how do we get that person down so they can get medical treatment would fall on us to be able to provide that service? How would we rig them up, get them stabilized and rig them up and get them down to the ground so EMS personnel can tend to them? Like Councilman Schaefer said, anything at heights, anything in confined space within reason that we would work on with that, anywhere that would need to be rigged up with rope and whatever. Now, we have very little training right now in rope rescue, so this will really enhance that immensely. And that's kind of an area that I see that we actually lack in tremendously. So it provides a tremendous benefit, in my opinion, to the community. We have lots of agricultural, lots of industry partnering with the ADMs and the Schwans and whatever to to provide that service for them, especially in the incident or the event that that somebody becomes trapped or at high elevations. It's just as easy as that for the most part. Tactical rescue is the very big bubble that we would have to try to to be involved in, but you know, we'll do our best with what we have. So because we lack the equipment for sure is most of the reason for this request, just to get to a very bare minimum in order to start to provide the training. It will provide some rescues for sure, but it'll be constantly evolving with equipment that'll be needed in the future as well.
Okay, thank you, Quentin, for that explanation. Other questions, John?
Since this, the Granite Falls unit disbanded and kind of sounds like a move to the area, is there another gap in the in the service area in this direction that they were covering that there may be some coordination with?
With Olivia, you're saying?
No, with the Marshall and, you know, to try to cover a gap that maybe may have been exposed with Granite Falls dropping out.
Sure. I think they were kind of very centralized, in my opinion. You know, they kind of covered a large area, especially in the West Central and the Southwest Region Fire Department Association, that we are a member of the West Central. And so they being as centralized as they were, they covered a bigger area. And and now it's moved a little bit farther to the east even. I look at as mutual aid partners with, you know, Rock County and Pikeston County in that way, that could need this service from us as well that I see us providing as well for them, that it may be difficult to provide a rescue if you're coming from Olivia area and it may turn into recovery. So if we can try to mitigate that, just even a small amount, that might be the difference between recovery and rescues.
And then just kind of a follow up on that, what would be the next closest area looking to the Southwest again? Is there anyone else that covers that?
I would say Sioux Falls. We could most likely call. I'm sure that they have a tactical rescue team. I don't know for sure, but I'm guessing that they probably do. Watertown area has one as well, you know, across the border, however. I would say we could work with them, but I see it as being more of a need here and.
There is really a big geographical area that is not covered.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Quentin, go ahead, Doc.
Question. Oops.
Sorry, go ahead.
Quentin, just a question for you. I'm fully supportive of this request, but any of the equipment that Granite Falls was using, is any of that, can we get any of that or is it all past due? Or did it go to Olivia? Anything that we could maybe get from them? Or did they discard everything?
Yeah, it's a very good question. We did contact the Elmerson County Emergency Management to try to see if we could find or at least receive some of that equipment from them. They did end up passing that on to the Olivia area. I don't know what the agreement was made with them. I'm not exactly for sure. What we were told was it is not available.
And Steve, you have a question?
Yeah, Quentin, what specific equipment are we getting for the 6,000? Because that seems kind of cheap for what necessary tactical rescue team equipment is.
Sure, this is like I talked about, the bare the bare minimum. It's what they a lot of bags, ascenders, descenders, things like that. It's a equipment that we would wrap the rope into that allows us to go down or up with it. Typically, lots of anchor plates, stuff like that. Now, like I've mentioned before, we did purchase some equipment last year in the operating budget. A lot of rope, lots of harnesses that we were able to get. Helmets, we were able to purchase with some of that last year out of the operating budget. So a large bulk of it and the rope. I mean, we have, I think we got two spools, a 600-foot rope each, two or three of 400, two or three spools of 300 feet worth of rope at a time. And that's where a bulk of the costs come. This is just really wrapping up the rest and how we ended up coming up with this list was I worked with an outside vendor and it would be the vendor that would do conduct our training. And I asked him, what do we need as a bare minimum to start this process? And so I went down the list from what he had to what we already had and cross referenced them. And this is the remainder of what we did not purchase last year.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. And it says we're serving the surrounding area and communities in the area. I know with the fire department, we have fee schedules for different service. I know with the fire department, we have fee schedules for different services we provide. So with this type of rescue team, would there be kind of a fee set up for whoever uses it? Whether it's surrounding communities or companies or individuals?
Yes, I think this could be listed with the, the West Central Fire Department Association on their fee schedule. We already have a partnership with over a hundred fire departments within the West Central and the Southwest Region Fire Department Association that is set up through the State Fire Marshal Division. I would see that as being a thing that would be included, just like our aerial equipment is listed separately. And I think our fee structure or fee schedule will be probably the same as it already is. We currently charge, I believe it's seven hundred and fifty dollars for a rescue call. I could see that being the exact same, following the same lateral line.
Any other questions?
Now, for clarification, excuse me, Mayor, this, we're, we're not ready to start a team like next week. Okay? This is a, a very long process in order to create this, this team. We're going to have to walk, crawl before we walk and we're going to have to walk before we run. We are at a spot right now where we're not even crawling. We can tie knots, kind of. They're, they're not a skill that you use every single day. They get, it's very difficult to remember to tie them. We can tie knots. Okay, don't get me wrong, but it's more than just tying knots. It's how to rig things together and, and, and pulleys and putting everything together. We're talking twelve to eighteen months minimum before we'd have a team probably at a level of what, what I'm proposing. Now, they initially, we would start at an awareness level. So we become a little bit more proficient with it and hope to get to the run spot, like I said, within eighteen months.
Quentin, this is, this is training work that, I mean, I think one of the advantages, and this will put the, the training tower at the merit center to some beneficial use for you guys also, correct?
Absolutely. Yep. I always look at trying to make that tower more useful and that's definitely a way.
Exactly. And then so the beauty of that is, is as they get more proficient and other departments have interest in at least being able to do some initial things, because obviously other departments that would be receiving mutual aid from an outside rescue team could have some of the basic things set up and prepared. So there'll be other training pieces. And again, I really commend you guys because I know that everybody, they, it's a, it's a double edged sword. It's a beautiful service to have, but it's just another burden of training and certification and, and then continuing training and, and practice with the, with the folks. And I really appreciate the, the, your, your firefighters stepping up and agreeing to take this on and serving the community in the area.
Thank you, Councilman Schaefer. Like I, I always say, it's our honor to be able to provide these services to the city of Marshall. And we'll continue, continue to do so to the best of our abilities. And I, and I'll state for the record that in my eighteen years on the Marshall Fire Department, there can be one or possibly two instances ever that we may have needed to use this. But luckily we, we had the, the equipment to provide that, to get that person safely down from where they were at. But if, we just got lucky that time. And so I, I wanted to make it more of a skill versus luck. I think skills more on our side than luck. Most of the time, especially for me, I never win anything, but, but that's, that's kind of what our goal is. Any other? Smile enough.
My one question, Mr. Mayor. Quentin, you said that we're not even crawling yet. What is, what are the anticipated costs to training of this? Are those going to be significant? Because again, you're absolutely right. This is a vital service that we need to do. But just because you have the equipment doesn't mean to use it if you don't know how to use it appropriately. So the training is quintessential and foundational. So what can we expect coming down the pike for training costs? And, and you have an estimated time of when we will be ready as a community to provide this service?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Meister. It's roughly about six hundred dollars per person to train to a technician or train the trainer type. Not too terribly bad, except in the fact if you train twenty people, that's up to be quite a bit of money. Now, with that, partnering with the Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education, I think that there's abilities for grant funding for that where this, we may have to, like we do already, we do have a great working relationship with them. And they do provide a lot of our reimbursements for a lot of our certifications and training that we already currently do. We just have to put the initial, the price upfront, the cost upfront and wait for certifications to be completed and they'll reimburse us back after satisfactory completion of all that, which is great. And we've had, and that's came back in, in thousands of dollars from, from this organization back to the city of Marshall. And it's just a great thing to have out there. So to answer your question, roughly six hundred dollars per person. Now timeline, we have to get the equipment here first. It does take a long time. As you notice, I only have one bid. It took me literally three months to get this, this, this bid put together. There just aren't tons of equipment manufacturers out there to put this together. That's why it took so long, cross referencing. Everybody calls a, a rope bag something different. So matching the terminology has been difficult, but I think we got a, we're on a good path right now. And then I apologize, Councilman. I don't remember your last part of your question.
Don't worry about it. You answered it already.
Am I a good bureaucrat?
It was, it was timeline.
I, can I ramble really well?
I think you, you stated twelve to eighteen months.
Yeah, it's roughly twelve to eighteen months. It's just a guess of lots of things on top of that that we're always working on as well. We got a great staff of forty five people that we are constantly evolving to become better firefighters for the community because we do feel that we owe it to the citizens.
With that, the council does have the recommendation for the purchase of the equipment and the amount of six thousand sixty five dollars and sixty one cents.
Mr. Mayor, one further question for Quentin, if he's still there?
Yes.
Quentin, are you, are you looking, I know, I know you've got forty five guys here. Are you looking at inviting anybody from, let's say Tracy or Conwood, many ought to lend to help? I mean, sometimes manpower is essential in some of those smaller communities.
Yeah, that's a good question. I've, I've kind of tossed the idea around of that. Logistically, it makes it a little bit more difficult and visiting with some of my colleagues around the state about things like this. They kind of steer away from that. It always sounds good at inception. Hey, we're forming a team. Would you like to be a part of it? Yes. When the rubber meets the road and people have to travel in order to train and, and, and the rest of logistics like that, things tend to, the spokes fall out of the wheel. And, and then it ends up being falling back on the host department anyway. I think we're just going to keep the spokes in the wheel and just keep it in house. I think we have a, a dedicated staff and more than enough people that can provide this. I, I look at it as being a team of approximately about fifteen to eighteen fellow firefighters that, that would be a part of this. And so I feel like we could very easily manage that in house. At the same time, we can initially putting the team together is the easy part. The hard part is maintaining cohesiveness of operations and keeping it going. That's obviously, and I'm not saying this is what happened there, but somewhere the cog fell out and, and it didn't work for any longer in Yellow Medicine County. And if I can prevent that by just keeping it in house and constantly keeping our own staff funneled through, that's the goal.
Well, and with the younger firefighters coming in, this could actually be kind of a helpful recruiting tool to spike some interest from other people to encourage them to come on the department for some specialties.
Yes, I do agree with that too, Councilman.
Any other questions?
And Quentin, the only reason I bring that up is that on my time in the fire department, I remember we responding to, you know, a half a dozen to eight fire, grass fires in one day. And we were spread out all over the city limits of Marshall and you take something like that and God forbid you have two incidents at the same time. And, and sometimes you don't have enough manpower to go around, but I, I applaud what you're doing. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the purchase of the equipment.
I would second that.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Jasmine?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller? Glenn Bearcoller?
Glenn, you're muted.
Yeah, yes, yes. Am I back on?
You are.
Okay, thank you.
Don De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And motion does pass. Agenda number nineteen is Project Z A three, the James Avenue Camden Drive Reconstruction Project. The action item would be to consider the resolution ordering the preparation of the report on the improvement. Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works to the engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. Can see the proposed construction limits map in front of you there. This project is on the twenty twenty one capital improvement plan. So net, net one of next year's projects, it's one of two proposed special assessment projects. And this preparation of report or ordering of the report is the first step in the assessment process. The project would be proposed to be a complete reconstruct of James Avenue between South Fourth and Camden Drive. That would include storm sewer, sanitary sewer and water main and a surfacing, resurfacing of Camden Drive between Fourth and James. And then storm sewer work out through the golf course to outfall on the Redwood River. We have had some preliminary conversations with golf course staff about this project and will continue to have some of those discussions going forward. But this is the, this is just the first step to order the report. We would propose to come back possibly at the next meeting with a feasibility report.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason? If not, is there a motion for the ordering, the preparation of the report?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Jasmine?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
Yes.
Don De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda number twenty is the North Bruce Streets, Kunkhala Road Reconstruction Project. This was also discussed by the Public Improvement Transportation Committee. Once again, I'll call on Jason Anderson to introduce this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. You're correct that the PIT committee did hear about this topic in late September at, at a meeting we held on, I believe it was the twenty second. So the purpose of this discussion, I guess, is just a kind of a status of the, the road and where we're at today and taking the temperature of the council and where we may want to go going forward. You know, we do receive quite a few complaints from residents along Skunkhala Road due to dust and, and washboarding of the road and just general, general condition of the road. For some background, this route used to be a county state aid route and it was turned over to the city marshal in nineteen ninety six and it's now on our state aid system. As part of the county road turn back, we were given some, some dollars at the time to cover a resurfacing. And I believe the funds are somewhere in excess of a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars today being held in an account and they can only be spent on this route. Back in twenty eleven, twenty twelve, city staff and council did explore the option of giving this route back to Lyon County or the township. There were many meetings that were held with city and county staff and elected officials as well. At that time, it was decided that the route will remain a city route until the road can be realigned straight south along that purple route identified on the, on the drawing. It was, it was determined at that time that a project should be completed within the next five years through the, the planning of the capital improvements. So it's now ten years later from that date and we haven't had significant movement with this since then. The major change being in twenty sixteen, the Skunkhala Road route along the Blue Path was reclaimed where the bituminous surface was mixed into the gravel, ground up and mixed into the gravel to create essentially a gravel surface. That was done because of the poor condition of the route. In the packet, we did include some information for rough idea for what it would cost to do different types of treatments to Skunkhala Road. I don't think I'll go through everything in great detail here, but I think I'll just hit on the, the highlight that Skunkhala Road is in the flood plain. You can see the levee near the green line there that everything south of that levee is protected and out of the floodway or flood plain. And everything north of that line is in the floodway or flood plain. So when you talk about investing serious dollars into Skunkhala Road, you start to question whether that's a good investment or not, being that you cannot develop on either side of the road. Conversely, realigning it and scheduling that improvement is a very costly endeavor and we can understand and respect that. We just want to make sure that we're penciling this out in the way that the council would like us to. And if the desire of the council is to continue to maintain it as a gravel road or to do, to explore some sort of surfacing treatment of the existing route or whether we should be trying to start penning in a realignment project into the upcoming CIP. I think I'll, I'll stop talking for a minute and allow some questions to come in if there are any and we can maybe continue the conversation that way.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Should we open it up for just, this is not an action item. This is a discussion item.
Jase, Jason, I, I do have questions and I know I kind of was at that meeting, but this road, you have a fifty year cost to cut and pave it. That doesn't include any flood damage that potentially happened to this road over that fifty years, correct?
Absolutely correct.
John? You had a.
If I recall from other meetings on this road, you know, any repair is hindered by the fact that it's, you know, the proximity to the river and kind of washing, potential of washing out and really two curves of the, the road and the river. I mean, that really hasn't changed, but over the past ten years, has there been any significant washing of those areas anymore? Has it encroached more into the road?
You know, I don't know that we've done a specific review of that, but we have not noted anything that's changed significantly that's caught our attention. We have done some stabilization projects over the years out there, some gabian projects that have certainly helped that.
And Jason, I, I believe, I know council is aware, but you might want to also mention that the residences that are along that road are on the river side of the road and that is not in the city limits.
That is, that is correct.
And I know that last year in part of our meetings with, with the, with other projects that we were proposing to do, the residents that, that do live there are obviously extremely concerned about the quality of the road. And I know, Jason, you touched on that, that, you know, they're obviously frustrated, understandably so. But, you know, again, the remedies are difficult. So anything we do with realigning or rerouting, there's still, you know, the best we could do is close that to not be a through street. But, you know, as Jason talked, we need to maintain the access at a minimum from the north because that, that road would still be used to access the ag land between the current Skunkhala and the levee. And, you know, and actually right now, all the, the land on the opposite on the protected side of the levee also. But Bob, a couple of questions that I have, I know that there was interest in the past when I first came on council from the college doing some extension to connect into a re, you know, a reroute. And then also would there be interest with the owner of the former trailer park? Or is that someplace where there's been conversations also about having campsites for campers? And, you know, to kind of enhance some of the tournaments and other things with events within the community? You know, to kind of throw those options on the table also as potentials to enhance that area.
Yes, Craig, I think the, in two thousand and eleven, many of those potential development ideas were discussed. And that included the, you know, a, a rerouting of the road that is, well, I'm not even sure, the road that goes back towards the stadium off of Highway twenty three, if that would go across and then that would, that connect up and that would open up. across and then that would, that connect up and that would open up some of that area around the pond for development. There was discussion of that, that subsequently was not included in the SMSU master facility plan. And part of that was the desire to control access as well as protect that wildlife area. The, there was also a discussion in that 2011 time about the very ideas you're bringing up about potential redevelopment of the former Camelot Mobile Home Park as well as the agricultural fields that is was in the floodplain historically, but since the completion of the 96 project is out of the floodplain. So there's a potential for development along there. And I think the, you know, and then as part of that discussion, then also that would mean either rerouting that road along that line. But the downside of that is that it would bring it down into a currently quiet residential area. Or is there another alternative there? Ultimately, I think the reason that that did not, well, and then there's one other area is we all know the area that is on the east side is city owned property is currently rented out for, I believe we acted on that lease this evening for farmland. And then farther east is the area between the flood control project and the large pond that is there for stormwater management. So there's, there's a, you know, hope and potential for really a lot of development area. But that, you know, that potential has not moved from the potential to actually happening. So I think, you know, without, without that is pretty difficult to justify the participation of the adjoining property owners in the cost of that project. So Craig, is that really the, where you were going with that question?
Exactly. Thank you, Mayor. It's, that's exactly the conversation I was looking for.
If I may, Mayor, I think this is a, a good discussion and the way you summarized it was, was fairly well done. And for our purposes, I think it's, that's a fine direction. It was just important for us to have a discussion with current council, gauge interest in pursuing a realignment or maintaining the existing route. And just kind of getting some, some support for the direction that we're going today and what we're, and what we're doing today. And make sure that we're all on the same page. You know, one thing that this route will need if we keep it in place is we'll have to add some gravel next year. We're estimating around $30,000 probably roughly. And that should take us for another three, four, or five years. So that, that, that is a cost that we'll have to incur to maintain it. But we do have some funds in an account that I think we could use, that 125.
Jason, from the prior discussion, there's also some concerns about the, I'll call it the banking of some of those curves that if you were actually designing this as a gravel road, you would maybe bank it till it's a little bit safer. And, you know, so we still have that issue to deal with.
If it's the desire of the council to have us address some of that with a project next year, we can certainly do that.
Other discussion?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I think that looking at the options that we have here, they're all expensive. They're all challenging and as other council members have met, we need to take into consideration the homeowners along the river and make sure that they have access. But I think in thinking about the future of our city, it absolutely needs to be done. And I like the idea of putting a campground or other amenity out there for the reasons that Councilmember Schaefer brought up. I think that's also a necessary amenity that we need to add to our community for growth and bringing people to see us and visit us.
I just like to add in that I think it'd be good to involve SMSU in that discussion if there's a possibility of redirecting some of that traffic in more from the east than where it's coming at now, because like the mayor mentioned, that Fairview is kind of a quiet street. It's going to be quite a shock for them to start seeing the volume of traffic going through and probably not quite set up and, you know, just at least have the conversation if we can bring it in from the east. It's probably not as convenient for the rest of the city, but it would channel some of that traffic around.
Okay. Other discussion?
I, I just have a question. So, so what are you going to be doing, Jason, on this? What, what direction are you getting from us?
Thank you, Councilman. Without any firm direction from the council to go in, in alternate path and to try to schedule and work towards a realignment project, we would propose to maintain the route in its general existing condition by adding gravel and continuing to blade it as a gravel road. Do some minimal levels of dust control around driveways like we've been doing and just continue that path. But, you know, with the level of complaints we receive and some of the conversations we have to have about this route, I just thought it was important to revisit this with our council since it's been a while, almost a decade since we last talked about it. And we're, we're comfortable continuing to maintain it in this manner. I just wanted to make sure that we have that support from the council and there's no desire to look into a different direction.
I, I guess my opinion on is that there, there is no easy solution. That's why we keep kicking the can down the road here. The existing road, I just, it doesn't appear like that's worth putting a lot of money on because of the, the, the river and so forth and the winding curves and so forth. You know, a straight, if a lot of people are using that coming into town, 500 cars a day or whatever, you want something straight without a lot of turns. And so I, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, the, the purple one has, is a nice straight road, but as you mentioned, there, there's problems then with Fairview getting a lot of traffic. Is it worth talking to some of the developers in town? If, if we did put a road in that area, would they start using it for housing or is it the type of property that would be good residential property or not?
And Glenn, I think that's a good suggestion and I, I think probably, you know, we should put that on our EDAs directors kind of radar at least. You know, that may be a marketing opportunity also.
I have spoken with the landowner recently and was given indication that there's no short-term pressing need for developable land up there. But the conversation could be had if assessments could be deferred.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, Jason, anything, final thing you want to add?
I think I would just summarize, Mayor, by, by taking my takeaway here is that we'll continue to maintain it how we have been maintaining it. We'll probably come forward next year with a proposal to add some gravel and blade it in as an improvement to the surface and we'll continue to do our best to manage the dust and the washboarding to the best of our ability.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. If there's no objection, I'll move us to the next agenda item, which is agenda number 21. Consider the approval of the 2021 health insurance renewal with PEIP. I'll call on Sheila Dubs, HR Director for the City Marshal to present this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Earlier this evening, we did review this information in a work session. So I will try to briefly summarize and if there are additional questions, we'll certainly be able to answer those for you. As we discussed, last year, the council decided to transition employee health insurance carrier to PEIP. With PEIP, we were required to enter into a two-year commitment and the council did that. They approved an agreement with PEIP for 2020 and 2021. Tonight, Bill Chukuski, our insurance broker is here this evening to walk the council through our health insurance renewal information. And then I will come back and discuss a cost share option with the council.
Welcome, Bill.
Thank you, Sheila. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have any slides on this? Are we just going to? Yep, there we go. Okay. As we talked about earlier, we did have an increase in rates this year of approximately 6.6%. These rates are up here on the slide right now. Sheila will be going over the contribution breakout with the employee in the, in the city in a little bit. It is my recommendation that we do accept this renewal. Even though 6.6% is probably higher than we would like. Cool this year was 9.7%. So I think that coming in at 6.6, so we did fairly well. A big part of this reason is due to the COVID. It's not, the 6.6 isn't based off of our current claims or our past claims. It's, it's simply the underwriters looking at what they anticipate will come in cost in 2021 due to the COVID pandemic. And mainly that's because elective surgeries have been put off for, for three, four months. So they think those are going to increase, not only increase in the elective surgeries, but the cost of those surgeries as well. Sir, any questions?
Any questions for Bill? If not, thank you, Bill.
And if I could, there was a question earlier about those numbers.
Yes, go ahead.
And I did get a response from people and they are incorrect and we should have the correct numbers tomorrow. And they should look exactly like what the months prior and after look like.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for checking on that.
Well, as we discussed in the work session last year, when we considered the move to PEIP, the council administration and our employees were becoming increasingly, increasingly concerned about the cost of our healthcare plan, both in terms of the premiums and in terms of the higher deductibles. The rate history is provided in the background materials. While we were at the co-op, we were experiencing volatility in our rates. And as you can see from the chart, we have received a favorable renewal this year. Our rates increased from 6.3 to 6.6% for singles and 6.66 for families. And this reflects greater rate stability than we have seen in some prior years. During the work session, we also reviewed the plan summaries briefly and discussed how the deductibles, co-pays and co-insurance work. On the low plans, the deductibles for the cost level one option is 3,000 for singles and 6,000 for families. And at the cost level four, the deductibles for employees for singles are 5,000 and 10,000 for families. The preventative care services are covered by insurance. All other types of insurance, all other types of services do require the employee to pay a deductible amount and/or co-insurance based on the service that they received in the cost level of their primary care clinic. The value option and the advantage options on the chart that's on the screen. Those two plans offer the highest benefit levels, but they also have much higher premiums. And so far, we haven't had any employees elect either of those two plans, but they are offered by PEIP and so we do need to offer them. I'd like to move to the cost share proposal. Thank, thank you, Jasmine, that's on the screen. The chart on the top again reflects our current rates this year and the chart on the bottom reflects the proposal for next year. As I mentioned earlier, we currently have no employees in the value or high plans. Those are colored in orange and yellow. So our focus is on the blue and the green plans. These plans are offered by PEIP, so we do need to show all of them. But just the, the employees that we have currently electing the plans are in the two low plans, the low plan one and the low plan two. Those two plans are IRS qualified high deductible plans. And so they are HSA and Viva compatible. In prior years, the direction that I received from the council was to design the cost sharing of the premiums with two components in mind. One was that the employer and the employee share equally in the premium increase. And the other was that the total contribution to health insurance by the employer be the same, no matter which plan was selected by the employee. The proposal that you have before you reflects that design. It has cost sharing of the premium increase. And both the employer and the employee shared equally in that 6.6% for singles and 6.66 for the family plans. And the employer is contributing the same overall contribution to health insurance for all single and all family plans respectively. And you can see that on line seven and 14. In the following page, we have provided a projected cost estimate for 2021. Staff had projected a budget increase of 106,670 for the 2021 budget. But the renewal rates did come in lower than expected. So our estimated budget increase is 86,839. This estimate does exclude the library and the public housing employees as well as the retiree employees that are still on their, our plans. Retiree employees pay their own premiums. This estimate is based on our current plan enrollment for this month. So the estimates could change based on employee movement between the plans or on or off the plan. The estimates are also broken out by fund for you on that page. When the council made the decision to move to PEIP last year, it was hoped that we would experience more stable rates. And staff believe that our rate increase this year does represent a rate stability in our current market. We are recommending approval of the cost sharing proposal that's being presented tonight with the same design that the council approved last year. If approved this evening, it will provide the human resource staff with more time to spend with employees who have questions during open enrollment period, since we cannot meet in large groups this year. To comply with the pandemic social distancing laws and guidelines, our employees' open enrollment this year will include both in-person and virtual visits with our benefit carriers by appointment. Either Bill or I would certainly be able to address any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you, Sheila. Questions the council has? If not, you have the recommendation.
Just a quick comment here. We talked about this at the work session and, you know, the premiums that the city is paying per employee is a little over 21,000. That's a substantial amount of money. You know, very high premiums. But you, you mentioned the fact that last year there, there was a study done of, of what premiums are being paid by comparable cities in our area. And the city of Marshall seems to be in line with those other cities.
That is true.
Other input? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John to approve the 2021 health insurance renewal. Discussion on that motion?
Mr. Mayor, this is Steve. This is a great deal actually, and the costs are very favorable. You know, healthcare insurance is one of the highest rates of any employer. And I think keeping it down and, and our move last year to go to PEIP as opposed to what we had formerly was a great cost savings. This year we're coming in under budget, so I think I strongly recommend voting in favor of this.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Jasmine?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda number 22, consider the amendment to the travel and training personnel policy. This was also discussed previously by the council personnel committee. I'll call once again on Human Resource Director Sheila Dubs.
Thank you, Mayor. At the September 22nd council meeting, Councilmember Lebat requested a policy change to our travel and training policy. His suggestion did result in further discussion amongst the full council that night and then a referral to the personnel committee for further review. The Personnel Committee met on this item and does recommend the policy language provided in your packet. In practice, employees already do review the mode of transportation that would be the lowest cost in traveling. But the proposed language serves to clarify that responsibility. It also provides that the supervisor is responsible to approve the method of travel utilized and may require an employee to use his or her assigned city-owned vehicle, vehicle for travel. and may require an employee to use his or her assigned city-owned vehicle for travel. Additionally, in the second paragraph of the policy, it also provides that an employee who chooses to use their own personal vehicle for travel when a rental is the lowest cost, that employee will receive a deduction on the standard mileage allowance. Generally, for travel of 60 miles or more from Marshall, a rental car tends to be the lowest cost. For travel under 60 miles, a city-owned vehicle is the lowest cost. City administrator Sharon completed some analysis that has also been provided to you in your packets related to the cost of utilizing and maintaining general pool cars versus using rental cars or paying employees on a reduced mileage reimbursement. Staff would recommend approval of the policy amendment.
Okay, thank you, Sheila. Any other input from the personnel committee? Or any questions from the council?
I have a few questions. First of all, about the 10 cents reduction per mile or if they decline to take the rental car. With the state of Minnesota, at the university here, we have a rule that says it's seven cents instead of 10 cents. Is there a reason we're using 10 cents? Could it be a different amount? And would it make sense to have it 7 cents? So it's kind of in line with what the state is using for its employees.
It can be a different amount, whatever the council would desire.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a second. Sharon, you have a comment and then we'll go to you.
I think past city policy, it was greater than 10 cents. I think past state union contracting, Glenn, or council member Bearcooler probably remembers this, it was at 1.10 cents. Likely the union membership negotiated it down to seven. Just to give a little historical perspective, so we just kind of chose 10 cents as maybe an amount that could persuade use per policy.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Steve, I think you.
Yeah, I think that the other thing that we discussed at the committee was that, you know, we want to absolutely incentivize people to use the most cost-effective in that. And as Sheila already said, is rental car greater than 60 miles away? So 10 cents is an easy number, certainly provides an incentive. 7 cents is certainly in there as well. But I think that if we want to incentivize people most, you know, the higher, the better without being excessively punitive.
The other, the other thing that came up in the conversation at the personnel committee was that I have some reservations while I understand that depending on where the travel is, if it's an overnight and there's a desire of the employee to maybe do something else on the trip, maybe visit family or have other excursion, sometimes it's more desirable for them to go in their personal car, although a rental car would facilitate that also. And I have concerns about liability and putting that liability responsibility on the employee while they're using their personal vehicle and then having the potential of having to litigate through shared liability because they're technically, you know, doing a city function or traveling on city business, but doing it in a personal-owned vehicle or privately-owned vehicle. I know the state allows it also, but I've always had concerns about personally picking up that liability while working and not having a defined line in what the function and the use is. So I really like the idea of encouraging the rental car because we also have liability coverage of, I believe, $2 million, which is the TARP limit in Minnesota for the state. So, you know, while they don't TARP limit anything else, they TARP limit their own liability. So I think it's interesting that enterprise will also cover that for us under the rental agreement.
Other discussion, other input?
I have a few other questions regarding the first sentence there that the travelers are required to review the available options. Would that be three options or two options? Is it the carpool, the standard mileage rate and the rental? Or, you know, what are we talking about, the options?
Yep, it's a rental, a personal vehicle or a city-owned pool vehicle.
So?
Or the employee's issued vehicle.
So the employee then would have to sit down and figure it three different ways and then provide information as to which is the low-cost one?
Well, the city clerk does have a very simple spreadsheet that we use to calculate whether a rental vehicle is the lowest cost option. So we could make that available to all employees very easily.
And Sharon, you had a comment there?
Yeah, I just want to kind of clarify that. Our discussion at personnel was to move away from a general pool car used for travel outside the city limits and use personal car or enterprise. Right now, we have really one general pool car that leaves the city limits. And we are, we discuss it personnel to really get downsized one vehicle using the personal vehicle or enterprise for travel. So it could be three, but it's likely going to be two. We still want to maintain a, obviously some city-owned vehicles for in-city travel. I just wanted to kind of clarify that. We really, our recommendations to move away from having a general pool car for outside the city travel. And Councilman Schaefer mentioned some, you know, some reasons with what you get with enterprise. And then if you look at the cost, it's not a lot of savings, but you do save some money by using enterprise versus pool cars and personal cars.
Glenn, you had another question?
Yes, I'm a firm believer in keeping it simple and different things. And I'm wondering, I know the university has a policy that you take, you're supposed to take a rental car, but you have the option of using your personal with the reduced rate. And I'm wondering if we did something like that, you wouldn't have to do a cost comparison. You just say, you know, you're supposed to take a rental car. If you choose not to, then you take the lower rate. That would keep it simple. There'd be less bookkeeping, less paperwork. And if it is the double cost method, then we are encouraging more people to take rental cars.
Glenn, the second paragraph in the draft policy, I think it does state what you're suggesting. That when a rental vehicle is the lowest cost option and is available, if that is declined by the traveler, the mileage reimbursement will be paid at the rate of 10 cents less than the standard business IRS mileage reimbursement rate on the most direct route. I think that's what you're suggesting.
Right, and I agree with that. And what I'm thinking of is in the first paragraph, would it really be necessary for the traveler and the supervisor and so forth to go over and determine which is the low-cost option every time? Or would we automatically just say it's the rental? If you choose not, then you take the lower rate. It'd be simple and easy to figure out.
If it's less than 60 miles, is it more cost-effective to have someone use a personal vehicle? That's the question. I think if it's less than 60, we would want them to use personal vehicle. And if it's, I mean, correct?
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, Kyle, but I believe that less than 60 miles using either a city pool car or your personal vehicle is the lower cost option. Using a rental for longer travel is the lowest cost option. Have I said that correctly? Thank you.
John?
Just one thing that kind of adds to the complication here. And I agree with you, Glenn, on what you're saying. But we do have, at this point, two pool cars that's kind of in the mix. The suggestion is that we get rid of the 2005 because it's high mileage. It's starting to have some problems from that end, from what we understand. So really, we're wanting to dispose of that one and bring it down to one. But I think eventually, as that one wears out, gets out, you know, we're going to work our way out of this. But, you know, we just simply have, you know, the two choices for anything, you know, outside of Marshall, that you take the rental or your personal vehicle with reduced rate.
Well, and I will say that sometimes the travel isn't, is close. It's regional travel. It's to Slaton or it's to Granite Falls. It's not a great distance away. So in some instances, our rental might not make the most sense to take.
Other discussion?
Can I add one other?
Yes.
Fact? Just for council members' knowledge and the public, for 2020, our conferences, travel, lodging, budget line items are down 70%. So it's probably a good year to kind of look at this because it's not having an immediate impact. We have done, obviously with COVID, far, far less. There's just, it's a lot of tele-technology or things have been canceled. We still do have some travel and training. It's not a lot. It would be for certification, engineering. We've had some assessing training that's required by the state and some fire department training. I think that was earlier in the year, though. That might have been before COVID. So I just want to state that for knowledge, too.
And then I'd also like to say for background, we took the suggestions and recommendations from previous meeting. The committee put a lot of time into talking about this and gave some direction which resulted in the proposal by city staff. So we have beat this up pretty good already coming into this for the recommendation.
So any other input?
Just a couple of more questions here. With regard to the rental cars, there's different size rental cars. Can the employee pretty much pick which rental car they're going to take?
I don't believe so. I mean, so if it's a single, one person traveling, we would always take either the economy or the standard car. And I've priced those in the background memo so that you can see that. There is, there was an occasion, John, myself and Kyle were part of a race equity group. And when we traveled in those instances for training, there were about six or seven of us that traveled in that instance. We did carpool in a minivan. So there may be occasions when staff would be utilizing a bigger vehicle, but that would be to save on the number of vehicles going to a particular training.
And that's the reason for the employee and the supervisor to have that discussion, so?
And the first line in the policy says, you know, you're going to review and determine the lowest cost method of travel.
And Glenn, do you have one more question?
I guess again, my concern is about the amount of work involved and the paperwork and so forth. And again, my preference would be to try and keep it simple. So it's not so much work for staff and supervisors. And, you know, that would be my, my comment. And I'll leave it at that.
Any other input?
I would move that we approve the amendment, understanding that, I think, Glenn, they're answering that concern of yours by, it seems like a fairly simple matrix of evaluating, you know, rate based on the spreadsheet that Sharon has put together. So I would, I would move that we adopt this, understanding that that's the method used to evaluate the most cost-effective option.
I'll second. Craig seconded by Jim. Now, discussion on the motion. I would just say I would thank and commend the Personnel Committee and staff for their work on this. You know, not only does this have the potential to save the city money in the future, it also addresses some probably liability gap issues that potentially we will have and also will really lead to the reduction in our fleet vehicle use that are city-owned and then support a local business on the rental because it is, that service is being provided in a cost-effective way. Any other discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to echo that, Doug's comments. I appreciate the committee's work and the staff's work on looking into this. And hopefully, we're all, we're all aimed toward the same goal. Thank you.
Other discussion?
One last question. I know that the state of Minnesota has a favorable rate in place with enterprise. And as a city, do we have any kind of a special rate that we get other than what's normally charged to customers?
We also receive the same rate. We are on that same contract with the state.
It's a state, it's a state contract cooperative bid.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's done through the Cooperative Purchasing Venture, which we are a member of through admin.
Yep.
Any other discussion on the motion? I would just also add that, and I alluded to this earlier, we're fortunate in Marshall that we have businesses that offer these, these services. So that's the whole reason. If we were in a community that didn't have a national rental agency located in their community, this really wouldn't be an option for us. Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Jasmine?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda I number 23, the 2021 EDA Budget and EDA Chamber Contracted Services. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and council members, about mid-year of this year, I've done some analysis and thought process into looking at the EDA contracted services with the chamber. And this is mainly provision of services provided by a separate contracted individual who provides admin support, technical expertise, is listed as the Assistant EDA Director. And I apologize for the delay. The EDA Board did approve this contract in July of 2020, was really waiting to see if there would be some movement towards the county sharing in a position for these particular services. However, the county and, and the cities, including Marshall, would, needs more time to discuss a city-county collaborative. So the thought process again came back to, should we continue this contract with the chamber? And the main goal of considering this is having an onsite, in-person presence. And we feel, and I feel, I should say, that I think if we had someone onsite, the utilization of the individual would be greater. We could enhance what we do for economic development by having somebody onsite. In the, in the memo provided, I did state that what the, what my recommendation would be is to utilize existing city staff for these services. We've had some internal discussions with staff, some admin support that could be provided. I do want to state, however, I do not foresee that as a long-term solution. One of the benefits of using existing staff is we don't know if the quality of hiring somebody at 20 hours a week or 15 hours a week would be there. We would look towards in 2021, if there's attrition, retirement, could, could we reutilize an existing position that comes open and combine it with the work that's provided here? So there may be some opportunities in 2021 to do that. And then we would advertise for a full-time position. The, again, I did, I did provide in the packets some pros and cons. There are many advantages to contracting for services. We do it quite a bit. We do it for engineering. We do it for legal services. We do it for IT. And so I'm not a, I don't consider them all a disadvantage. And so I'm not a, I don't consider them all a disadvantage for this type of work, for the work that's provided and how it's provided on a weekly basis. And and some of the tasks themselves, I really feel strongly about having onsite onsite services provided. This has nothing to do with the quality of the services provided in the contract. There's there's really no complaints on this. So I know previously that the EDA Director provided her recommendation in a letter that was sent to the entire council and the EDA Board. And so that is her position on it, on the value provided by the contract. But my recommendation is that the City Council direct the EDA Board to give a 30-day notice to terminate the 2021 EDA Chamber Contracted Services effective at the end of this year. And I will add, I have notified the EDA Board of this particular discussion tonight and have had a conversation with the 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 contracted service provider on this particular item as well. So I will pause and see if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. We'll open up for questions.
Sharon, just a question. One thing I think that when we proposed to bring EDA underneath the city umbrella, this was part of your proposal at that time to bring this person, this contracted position underneath the city staff, underneath the city umbrella as well. Is that correct?
I know that I guess I've been thinking about it prior to this year as a goal. And I do think that it does strengthen this, the EDA arrangement under the city. So I'd have to look back at my presentation. I think I think that was a thought process back then and and timing did not work out. We did have transition, of course, with the EDA Director and and so yeah, the timing of it really works now rather than previous, but I believe that's correct.
And I would, and I would echo what you said earlier, too. Having another in-house person just helps, you know, our EDA Director, when she's unable to be in the office, or maybe she's got duplicate appointments or whatever, to having another in-house person that could assist with those type of things would be very beneficial to EDA and the continued expansion of Marshall and the region.
Any other questions? John?
Really? Yeah, I don't have a question, but I would, you know, just a comment. You know, the, the whole EDA process that the city has gone through over the past number of years has really been an evolution. I mean, we've we've keep growing and we keep growing and as a city, but we also keep growing in our EDA functions. You know, having been on the EDA Board for many years, I do fully support, you know, city administrators' direction on this. You know, again, this is a growth. We're adding to the capability of what we have in EDA. I'd have to say my only regret out of here is that we are going to be losing the services of an individual that has been doing a very good job for the city. But just the situation and the location is not the most efficient for us. And so we're, you know, that's the reason for making this change really is to improve the efficiency of the operation. And, you know, she's been providing the services a number of years. Been very well, but just works out that having, doing it from a remote location is not as favorable as what we need to have at this point as we keep on growing. So.
Okay, thank you, John. Other, other input?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Craig.
Yes, and I I I agree with what John said. I think Marcia Leslie's done a really awesome job for us and and really appreciate her efforts. And I, and I'm sure that there are going to be things that if she's willing, that will likely be asking her to participate in. And I think Sharon kind of alluded to that with some special projects and and other focus things. And and another thing that I I do want to put in here while I I fully support Sharon's recommendation here, I want to make sure that we don't lose the connection that we have with our businesses and the private sector that we get through the chamber and other networks. I think while the city takes this in, I think we have to recognize that the city can't do this kind of economic development by ourselves. This needs to continue to be an active partnership where we seek out both the input and the and the cooperation from our our existing businesses and other development opportunities so that we don't lose that flavor. Because I think we are fortunate to have a lot of very strong forward-thinking private individuals that really do look beyond their universe at the entire city picture and the regional picture. And and I think that's important to continue. I think one of the things that Cal did that I thought was was good and got us to where we are is the fact that we did look regionally, understanding that the strength of our other communities around us are also the strength and and viability of our workforce for the city and for our area businesses. So I don't want to lose that piece either.
Other input?
I have a few comments here. First of all, I'd like to know, what does the Chamber of Commerce have to say about this? What is their response, Glenn?
I would say they're not supportive. I think the contract provides some services to the chamber, too. So I would say that they're not supportive.
The couple of other comments. One, I, I would think it makes sense to wait and find out what the county is going to do before we make certain decisions. You, I really appreciate the fact that you listed both the pros and the cons of this. It was very, very helpful that you did that. And I appreciate it. And looking over the pros and cons, it's convinced me that it would be best not to terminate the contract based on some of the things that you've mentioned there. I think you've indicated that would probably save us money over the long term if we stayed with the contract, which is important. You also indicated it would be more difficult with regard to an employee. With a contract, you can adjust it, increase it, decrease it as far as what you need. With an employee, it's harder to get rid of an employee than to terminate a contract. In this case, we can terminate the contract within 30 days. So and I'm always skeptical when we add another city employee to the payroll. And I think that's the goal long term is to add more employees here. You indicated also that there's flexibility and year-to-year on with regard to a contract. And and so I I'm convinced it would be in our best interest not to terminate the contract.
Thank you, Glenn. Other input? If not, this has been discussed not only by the council, but the Personnel Committee and the EDA representatives. Are we at the point where where I can entertain a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the recommendation by the city administrator.
Motion by Jim. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Russ. Discussion? There's no discussion. We'll move to a vote. Jasmine, would you take the role? Call vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
No.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lozenki?
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll move then to Commission Board Liaison Reports, which is Agenda I number 24. For my part, the Fire Relief Association was scheduled to have their quarterly meeting this evening, actually at the same time as this council meeting, but that meeting was canceled. It will be rescheduled at a time when the members can be in attendance. Southwest Regional Development Commission had their monthly meeting. And we continue to meet by by Zoom for that meeting at least for the foreseeable future. So and then as part of the Southwest Regional Development Commission, I'm their representative to the MinDOT Area Transportation Board or partnership for MinDOT District 8. And Jason was also in attendance at at the ATP meeting, which was last Friday. That was an organizational meeting for the year as we start the the process for evaluating projects over the next five to 10 years. Also at that meeting, I was elected the Chair of the MinDOT District ATP at that meeting. With that, Craig? We'll start it on your end.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Southwest Amateur Sports Commission did meet at noon today and we hadn't met all summer. So there was actually quite a bit that got covered. And I just want to hit some of the highlights. One is that I think that that we really need to commend and recognize, especially Maha, because I think they really looked forward through the COVID thing and about how to keep their athletes engaged and active and advancing and doing it following some really tremendous protocols and and working with the the Minnesota Department of Health and with the Minnesota State Hockey Association and Minnesota State High School League. Maha's model for having the kids active and they kind of use that whole pod method of having 12 or less players. They did dryland in the arena pretty much all summer. They kept the kids going. They have posted for their tournaments. They have a really good COVID plan for going back in on the ice and using the arena. They've got, all of their tournaments are full. The only thing they haven't done yet are the, I think, the the girls or the women's league. They have, they have one team that dropped out and it's it's back to the old, we're we're short of hotel rooms and some of the teams don't want to stay in a motel. They want to stay in a hotel. So we did have one team drop. They're hoping to get that filled back in, but they're really, and what I appreciate is that they have not gone for their local business sponsorship. They do, they have worked through the CVB who they have an agreement with. And the CVB had reported Cass, I think, is even on with us or was on earlier tonight. They've had good dasher sales. They've actually sold eight more. They've had eight additional businesses that came in on their, on the dashboard sponsorships. But they're also looking at, they know they're going to be way down on concessions this year. But they're looking forward to kind of turning the tables and and the Baseball Association, MABA, has done the same thing. Where they're looking at, instead of asking for things from the local business, they're trying to give it back. So they're looking at ways when teams travel for the tournaments. Normally, they would hang around at the arena, eat at the concession stand, watch the additional games. They're only allowing two people per player to be in the arena during these tournaments. They're working with the local businesses with Alex and the technology that we have at the arena to stream those games out to a number of different venues so that the fans can go to the other venues, support our businesses safely and continue to enjoy the game. So we're really fortunate to have the technology. Perry Wylaggy, who sits on the state Amateur Sports Commission and also with the State High School League, said that a lot of Marshall gets talked about a lot through the hockey, through the arena and how they're operating. And their COVID safety plan has been passed out as a template for a number of the other facilities to use. I don't know if you folks have heard, but there's also going to be a a juniors team, which to me is kind of like the semi-pros, but it's a juniors team that's 18 to 20-year-olds. And it's the transition that a lot of collegiate hockey players take from high school to college, where they go a year or two years into juniors, finisher, continue to develop their skills and physically to grow in a little stronger to the game. And a lot of the collegiate hockey players come out of the juniors. So we've actually got the Ice Dogs from Alaska that are going to be down here into January using the Red Baron Arena as their second home. And they'll be playing three weekends, six games per to as home games. And they're going to allow 250 tickets per game. And so they should sell that out pretty easy. The Baseball Association actually hosted two state tournaments this year. The city of Austin backed out of their tournament. So Marshall has always done the 13-year-olds, also took on the 14-year-olds and ended up where normally with their, with their 13-year-old tournaments, they get 30 teams between the two. This year, they still had 25 teams. So really, really hats off to to the, our amateur sports people for really making sure that we kept activities in interest for our youth. And I think they did it very smartly and very safely. And they're being recognized for that. So hats really off to them. And that's really all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Craig, Steve? Steve, you're muted.
Sorry, my ma, my committees did, the Community Services Board did meet, but I was on a Wednesday and I had a church obligation. That was last week. Cable Commission did not meet. And EDA is actually a meeting on the 21st. There was a county EDA meeting, but I did not attend that.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Glenn?
Planning Commission meets tomorrow and Public Housing Commission meets on Monday.
Okay. Regarding the EDA, you may have noticed in the listing of bills paid, we've started, or there's been quite a bit of the CARES funding that's been issued out to the businesses. So hopefully that is helping some of the businesses do some recovery. Our utility, the Utility Commission has not matched yet. That's coming up. So. And Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Library Board met last night. They continue to operate and stay open with the COVID situation the way it is. They are going to be submitting about five to $5,500 worth of reimbursement to CARES. They bought a camera to use for meetings. They're doing more Zoom meetings and also for their expansion, or put in for their drive-up window and the expansion of that. They also received some good news. The local Kiwanis Club disbanded and they donated the remaining funds in their account to various organizations in town. So the library was very happy to accept a little less than $500 from the Kiwanis. So we thank them for that. CVB, in addition to the things that Councilman Schaefer missed and mentioned, we had a couple of long lists here because we didn't meet for a couple of weeks. Starting in October, I believe the CVB will be taking over the scheduling that is currently done by Community Services at the Red Baron Arena. So I think that will help things there, too. They've also been in discussions with city administrators, the mayor, about moving the CVB offices to the Red Baron Arena. And Cassie had mentioned that by doing this would give the CVB an opportunity to start to, to start a tourist center. And it would help with the continued separation and promotion of Marshall. Couple of things, like as Councilman Schaefer mentioned, Fairbanks, Fairbanks Ice Dogs will be coming to Marshall. Another exciting event that started last year that they want to pull off again this year would be the Haunted Tower using the Mara Center, which last year was overwhelmed with kids and adults going out there. They had a very good response to the craft show at the, at the arena. And as again, as Councilman Schaefer, I'm going to give him credit, the dashers expansion there were, were additional ones were sold. Police Advisory has not met, but we will be meeting later on this month to go over some sergeant interviews. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And Jim?
Mine did not meet, but since I think it's Steve who brought it up, I was at that county EDA meeting where they're discussing working with us as the EDA. And I believe, and Sharon and Bob, you're there to correct me, the county has hired or in the process of hiring somebody to kind of work through some of those details as a moderator, not a moderator, mediary for us. Is, am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, they, a recommendation was put forth to hire a facilitator to help move the conversation forward.
Yes, they did not make a decision at that meeting. So that's all I have on my board and committees. Oh, I should give an update on City Hall since I'll throw that out here. As you, as all city council members, Mr. Schaefer, you guys toured City Hall. I sat and actually got a visit with Sharon today. The material for the east wall was ordered on October 1st. So that should be coming soon to get that closed in. The, the colors, the bricks, the outside steel, that has also all been ordered. You know, it's not as easy as just go picking out your hardware store. The bricks are actually going to be made for our city hall. They're not sitting someplace in our house. So they have now been ordered. They're a couple of weeks out. We are hoping November stays nice. We are hoping November stays nice and that City Hall can get enclosed with a very small heat bill. So everybody hope for a warm, warm November. So that's the update on City Hall. Thank you.
And thank you, Jim. We'll move then to council member individual items. Craig, let's start at your end.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing that I have is I would propose to have a conversation with some of our city staff. I know that a lot of our issues as far as, you know, like some of the problems with with garbage and other things around the community are based on complaint. And I'd like us to be a little bit more proactive as a city to point out some problems before winter. There's a couple of places that I've noticed in Ward Three that there's a substantial amount of accumulation of less than desirable items kind of in backyards and other areas. And it's starting to generate some complaints. So that's the one thing I would point out is that, you know, at some point in time, it'd be nice if we could figure out to do kind of a citywide cleanup day where we assist people with our haulers or maybe even do it by by wards and have three different days. But or three different weekends, but work with kind of a clean up the city day to get some of the accumulated treasures out of the neighborhoods. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Steve?
I have nothing here, Mr. Mayor.
And Glenn?
It was nice to see that the governor of South Dakota was in Marshall yesterday. I had a chance to listen to her speak and she talked about how the government in South Dakota is handling the COVID situation. And that was interesting to hear. And I can see why individuals and businesses are anxious to move to South Dakota. Thank you.
Jim?
Um, I do want to like to point out to you, Glenn, is remember that South Dakota's COVID infection rate is quite a bit higher than Minnesota's per 100,000 citizens. The other thing I have is last spring, we were the winners of a ice rink. What is the status? On that, I don't, I believe it was an easy ice or something. And it's just kind of, we were awarded the ice winners. And then it just kind of dropped off the radar. Is that floating out there someplace yet?
The, Sharon, you want me to talk about it or you want to talk about it? Go ahead, unless. My understanding and some others, Craig, maybe you're also familiar with the conversation, but that the between the Hockey Association and our our park staff, that they have been working with the Minnesota Wild, have identified the kind of the location and they anticipate that the installation, which is really being discussed for an area at Independence Park, that they that they anticipate that the installation would happen yet this fall. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right. So it's more of a neighborhood rank rather than a a competition rank. Craig, you you know a lot of this, too. Is is that correct?
That that's my understanding, Mr. Mayor. I'm not real detailed familiar, but I know that that was the conversation at the time that the award was made. I did talk to some of the Maha members and also a couple of our staff at at Red Baron Arena. And that is, that's my understanding, but I wasn't aware of the timeline.
But Jim, the, let's ask for probably a more complete report from from staff as well as the Hockey Association.
I would appreciate that. I just thought of that tonight. The only other thing I want to bring up is, you know, I'll just wait till the elections are done. But since I think most of us have figured out how to use Zoom and social, you know, media and all that, I would like to get the town halls somewhere back on the schedule. You know, like I said, it's only fair to wait till after the elections. But I think it would be good to maybe get that on schedule December, January, since we've all become very proficient using our computers to communicate now. So.
Sounds good. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not often that we hear good comments. So going into church on Saturday evening, I had a resident from Fourth Street come up to me and just complimented not only city staff, but the contractor and all the work that's being done on Fourth Street and the communication that's being had between the residents along that street and also the contractors and city staff. She said, every time I wave my hand, she gets the impression, oh, what does she want now? But that's not what they get. She has a question and they're very professional and they take care of her question and her comment. So hats off to city staff and the contractor as well. My second item, Mr. Mayor, is probably maybe for another meeting, but I'd like to bring up the fact of, like Jim said, we're all getting used to holding these Zoom meetings. And at their nine meeting last, two weeks ago, we had an appointment to the Police Advisory Committee. And normally we do that with the full committee. We interview the person. And Mr. Mayor, you stated that you try to get the liaison to go with you or to get a communication to interview the candidate. While I'm totally in supportive of the candidate that we selected to go on the Police Advisory Commission, we did not have that meeting, you and I did. So I would like to propose that we probably go back to having Zoom meetings if possible with people that are applying for the commissions and or boards. And maybe we can discuss that at a different meeting. But I think, again, like Jim said, we're getting more familiar with Zoom. And who knows how long this COVID is going to last? It could last three months and it could last six months or another year. So I would like to see us get back into some kind of a a meeting schedule with with interviewing candidates for local boards. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And just, thank you, Russ. And I appreciate that, just the clarification on, you know, that process is when the applications come in, Kyle sends it out to the liaison as well as myself. And then we get the feedback back to Kyle. And then he, if that didn't occur in that, in that case, you know, my apologies, but I had assumed that that had happened. Otherwise, I would not have made that statement, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
John?
Just a couple of things. One to add on to what Jim brought up. You're saying you're, if you go by the percentage of population, you're twice as likely or better to get COVID in South Dakota as you are in Minnesota. And they've moved up from, they used to be about 30 to 27 in ranking of percentage. They're now number six of the, out of the 50 states and pushing very close to Louisiana, which is the top one. One thing that would like to bring up, I know it's not really in our jurisdiction as such, but perhaps if, you know, conversations, Jason, your conversations with Min Dot, filling up with gas over at the Hy-Vee gas station today and came close to witnessing about a three car accident as somebody was trying to come or did come out of the Hy-Vee parking lot on directly onto Main Street, making a left turn, which is really not the intent of that. And as I exited out, making a right turn, vehicle ahead of me goes out and makes another left turn. So I think it'd be good if we could get Min Dot to put some, perhaps some barriers down through the center of that to really that it's right in, right out at that intersection. And I've seen people try to cross over, try to get in on that curved entryway. And it is a dangerous intersection at that point that really shouldn't be. So it'd be great if we could get some, maybe some barriers across down the center of the highway right there to stop, stop those left turns coming out of there. And that's about it.
Could I respond quickly to what John and Jim have said? It is true that South Dakota has a higher infection rate than Minnesota. But what the governor of South Dakota emphasized is the death rate. And the death rate per 100,000 in South Dakota is lower than in in the state of Minnesota. And so what they're going by is the death rate, not the infection rate.
Mr. Mayor, I can't help but have to chime in on this as a doctor.
Not surprised.
I will tell you that the hospital, we are on diversion on a lot of places because the hospitals are full. And yes, Councilmember Bear Kohler is correct. The death rate is a little higher here, but we're having much sicker people. And remember that we have a lot bigger tertiary care hospitals in Minnesota. Minnesota's full. Centra Care is shutting down elective surgeries again. Sioux Falls is full. I have been taking patients from other cities around that would typically go to McKennan, and I'm taking them here. So with all due respect, Councilmember Bear Kohler, take this disease seriously, please. As somebody who has gone through it and got lucky, I will tell you, it scared the hell out of me. And it's not to be taken lightly. And we live in a balance. It's my first pandemic, too. But I would rather we live and live well than have to bury too many people that we love. And that's the end of the.
I am taking it seriously, but I'm looking at the facts. And I'm basing what I'm saying on the facts.
I don't think you're looking at.
Seriously.
I'm a bear caller. I don't think you're looking at all the facts. Come talk to me privately and we'll go through all the facts.
Well, that that would be, this is a good point to move on to my report, if I could. And I would just have one item I want to bring up this evening. And that is that this Thursday is the dedication of the Veterans Memorial Park. Starts at 11 o'clock. It will actually be a wonderful ceremony. And those of you have probably seen the features being installed all the way from the the concrete design that would happen earlier that was completed by Hess Concrete. The the statues that were installed, the 60 by 14 wall with the engraved quotations on on it that was done by Ben Wright Fabrication, as well as the sculpture in the center of the the park that was completed by Action Manufacturing and the the lighting that was completed by Coleman Electric, I believe, today. The as well as just a lot of of hard work by our park maintenance staff that really had an intricate role in not only the design, but also the preparation there, as well as all of the donors that are being recognized on the on the placards of the cement placards that are on the steel mounts that were made by Ben Wright Fabrication. So it's really a a admirable and almost stunning and breathtaking park. And I invite everyone to 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 visit the park and and really kind of relate to the significance of what that is. One other feature that will be at the memorial, whether permitting, will be a flyover by the Fagan Fighters from the Fagan Fighter Museum. That will be a part of this. And then all of the veterans organizations in the community and in the region where really had a strong hand in the in the kind of the design, the planning, as well as the funding of this park. City of Marshall and Lyon County also participated in the funding of the park. We recall that the City of Marshall's funding did come from our endowment legacy fund, which was originally funded by the transfer of ownership of the of the hospital. So 11 o'clock Thursday. Encourage if your schedules allow it to be there. With that, I'll move on to staff reports, starting with City Administrator Sharon Hanson.
Mr. Mayor and Council, very briefly, Councilmember DeTrainer mentioned and others mentioned the CARES Act. We have had an internal deadline for CARES Act submissions of October 15th. And if you remember, our total allocation was about a million, 1,038,000. Approximately half of that was for business grants, the other half for internal city expenses. Our state deadline is November 15th. There's an EDA committee that reviews the business grants. And we've had our finance staff, along with our contracted auditor, help us review the city side expenses. But I think prior to November 15th, at the at the first meeting in November, we will provide a full report of the encumbered CARES Act funds. Are you aware of that? We do not plan on sending any of the funds to the to the county, as was the process. If you do not use the CARES Act fund, I also want to add, we are still learning on the CARES Acts on September 21st. The the US Treasury put out a new guidance that actually gave some more flexibility in terms of encumbering funds for public safety. And so we will utilize that new guidance from the 21st and encumber some additional funds for public safety. And on the CARES Act, the the county CARES Act dollars has been helpful to Marshall businesses as well. We could likely help promote that a little bit more, too, when we see the need. And the county has been helpful in providing some information that they are obtaining from their auditor and what they get. So I just want to put out kudos to the to the county on that. On the agenda tonight was the James Avenue Project. And I just want to make a note that we are trying to do these line items in our budget and on the agendas earlier. That has been a request from some council members is that we try to get these projects on track so that we can bid them earlier. So tonight was one example, which is a James Avenue project where we can hopefully get it bid out earlier next year. I just wanted to make that note. And other than that, I'm really appreciative of all the committee works and the reports, lots of work being done by council members, City Hall Committee personnel, and it goes on. So I couldn't do it without you. So I just want to give kudos to those to those committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Questions for Sharon? If not, Jason, are you still on the Director of Public Works?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You should have included in your packet some information on our public informational meetings that we've got this week on Thursday for the North First Reconstruction and the James Avenue Reconstruction Projects. Thursday night, 5:30 is North First and 6:30 is James Avenue. We're going to try to handle this by Zoom, but folks can attend in person. Everybody who lives within the project limits received a notice in the mail. I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we had some smart salting training courses over the last couple of weeks. And now most all of our operators of snow equipment have received the MPCA Smart Salting Certification Training Course. The last of the group took it today. And on October 5th, I, myself, Dean Kudrin and Jesse Dean all attended a MS4 chloride class, which was really informative. It was a event that allowed us to hear from other public works departments and how they try to manage snow and ice and what's in their, what their operation consists of. Further, thank you, Councilman Labatt, for mentioning the Fourth Street Project. I would agree that all of the residents have been extremely patient on that project and that our contractor has done a pretty good job of working with the residents and trying to communicate with them as the projects moved along. So it has gone really well that way. Mayor Burns mentioned ATP for District Eight, Min Dot. They have sent out grant solicitations. And we are targeting, at this point in time, Transportation Alternative Grant for new bike trail on the east side of the school property to connect trail up by C Street down to Southview Drive. We'll be coming in front of the council in the coming months to discuss that and and bring forward some cost proposals for our grant match. And look for your approval on that. Broadmoor Valley did have a water outage last night and into this morning. And I know that MMU worked very hard with Broadmoor Valley staff to identify and fix the leak and repair the leak. But I know that there was some, we did get some calls and concerns from the residents out there about the water outage, but mostly just mentioning this as a hats off to the MMU crew for putting. putting in that work on a private system, uh, understanding that they, we had to get it fixed. Uh, I think lastly, I would just mention that we got amended FEMA floodplain map panels in the mail and I have reviewed it and I called the State Floodplain Manager to discuss as well. And I think there's really no material changes. Uh, the, the changes on here reflect a de-accreditation of the nineteen sixty-three levy um, due to lack of proper freeboard and uh, making that an accredited levy is a discussion that we don't have time for right now. But uh, I would look for in the coming months for them to schedule a community coordination meeting with staff and elected officials. So we will loo- look to keep you in the loop as that comes along and um, try to, try to keep you informed. I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, Jason. We should, yeah. The, uh, the nineteen sixty-three levy, I thought we'd, uh, just did the correction of several years ago to that at their direction. So we should, we should follow up on that discussion. So.
I, yes, I, I would be able to have that conversation with you sometime there to discuss the details of that.
Okay. Uh, with any other questions for Jason? John?
Just, just a comment. Uh, Jason, I appreciate your, uh, update on that, uh, salt, uh, you know, salt on the roads, uh, usage and your, what's going on there. So thanks for including that. Uh, uh, I know you had a comment in there about, uh, some of the equipment that, uh, I think it was Sioux Falls or one of the other, some of the other cities, larger cities were using. And, uh, you know, that may be something to just keep in mind, see if at some point we can start to work in that direction. So just, but thanks for the update.
With that, uh, if there's no other questions for Jason, we'll move on then to remaining items on the agenda. Agenda number twenty-nine, the administrative of, oh, excuse me. Oh, Dennis, I'm sorry. My apologies. Uh.
Okay, ju- just a few items.
Good, good.
The, uh, lease of city property, the farm leases are slowly trickling in. We approved another one tonight. There are two tenants that lease leasing six parcels. I've been in contact with them to make sure they get their leases back so we can approve those. The next council meeting, I, I'm assuming fall harvest is kind of taking up their time right now. They just kind of overlooked the paperwork. Um, the Maha Agreement for ICE rental and concessions, we've consolidated those agreements into one agreement. The final draft went out to Maha. I haven't heard back. We're just waiting to get their, their response. Um, and then previously tonight, the H R A approved the sale of property um, to best topsoil. I'll continue to work with Mr. Swenson on a purchase. Now, the purchase agreement's now been approved on the development agreement that needs to be modified slightly. And through the E D A, and we're continuing to work with an additional developer and a purchase agreement is being modified for the purchase of an additional piece of city property. So things are moving forward with the E D A. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions for Dennis? I feel like I should ask you a question since I skipped by you earlier, but.
No, I had the answers for those things. I just talked about them. Another question I might not have.
So we'll move.
Always ask them about Helena.
Yeah. The, uh, the inspections are still ongoing. We, I hear infrequently from the Minnesota Department of Agriculture, but every once in a while they chime in.
Hey, thank you, Dennis.
Yes.
Uh, agenda, I'm, item number twenty-nine is the administrative brief for your review. Agenda number thirty is the information items, uh, including the, the current building permits. Which brings us to agenda number thirty-one. Is there any other business to come forward this evening before the Marshall City Council?
Can we adjourn second?
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig to adjourn discussion. If not, uh, by voice vote, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
See y'all.